Welcome everyone to our April 17th, 2024 regular meeting. If we could all stand and say pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's start ourselves off with the administrator report on the agenda posting and notification of the meeting to the media.
Okay, and I'm not seeing my list here.
No, it's not on it for some reason.
I can go last. That's what I'll do. It's gotta be there. There we go. Okay. The agenda was posted at the Three Lakes School, the Sugar Camp School in the town of Sugar Camp, and via email, the town of Three Lakes, the town of Monaco, and the Demer Library. The media notified via email included the Vilas County News, the North Woods River News, WRJO News, WXPR Radio, and WACD, WATK Radio.
All right, well, thank you for that report. And do we have any amendments for tonight?
We do not.
All right, so I will seek motion for approval of tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. I'll second.
All right, motion by Michelle, second by Alicia. Anyone have any questions? Hearing none, I'll call to vote. All those in favor, the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes five zero. Next, we go to approving minutes of the March 20th, 2024 regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 20th, 2024 regular meeting as presented.
Second.
All right, motion by Michelle, second by Stacy. Anyone having any questions, comments on the minutes? Hearing none, I'll call to vote. All those in favor, the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion does pass five zero. We go now to approving the vouchers slash check register for the period of March 15th, 2024 through April 9th, 2024.
I'll make the motion to approve the checks stated March 15th, 2024 through April 9th, 2024 for accounts payable, ACH checks number 232-400-238 through 232-400-251, regular checks number 129-505 through 129-600, manual checks number 5645 through 5660, and wire transfers number 2023-00039 through 2023-00057 in the amount of $589,956.76, and ACH payroll checks number 900-424-50 through 900-42721, and regular payroll checks number 593, I'm sorry, 59350 through 59352 in the amount of $349,001.60 for a total amount of $938,958.36.
I'll second.
All right, so motion by Josh, second by Alicia. Anyone having any questions? Hearing none, I'll call to vote. All those in favor, the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes five zero. Uh, next we go to public comments. Would anyone wish to speak to an agenda item tonight?
No one signed up? No one, no one signed. I brought the sheet up.
Oh, okay. There you go. All right, so we have no public comments for tonight. Uh, so next we go to administrator's report, Nexus facilities study update.
Yes, it's very brief tonight. I just wanted to touch base with you and let you know where we are at. Um, I am going to be meeting tomorrow with our admin team, and what I want to do is have a discussion basically focusing on the Sugar Camp facility. Um, Nexus's asset, we look at the Sugar Camp plans a little more closely and decide instead of the, all the many options they had there, with your feedback and all, what are like the top two? So I'm gonna get the administrative feedback, and then I'll be able to share that with them. And then I'm scheduled for the first week of May. Um, they're going to speak with me. They wanna start developing survey questions, so they can get that back to me and share with you all for our input, because as we've made it very clear, we would like, um, us here as well as Jen West and feedback from administration and others before we would, you know, want to just set them loose with it. So that's where we are with that. So still working on the background, um, have very much sorted out, you know, what our maintenance and routine plans are for the summer. Uh, you pretty much are aware of those from our past meetings, and then going forward with what would be, you know, in a bigger project. So that's where we're at.
All right, any questions, anyone? All right, well, thank you for that report, Terry.
You bet.
Uh, next we go to new business, uh, May meeting date dates.
Okay, our regular meeting would be scheduled on Wednesday, May 15th, and this is the meeting that we always schedule with your permission at 4:30 due to the senior awards and scholarship night. That begins at seven, and last year, I think it worked out very well that we were able to get our business done and then attend, um, the event. So that would be different than our normally scheduled six o'clock time. So that is where we are with that.
All right, so since it is different than our stated in the policy, we'll need a motion to change that meeting time.
I'll make a motion to change the regular meeting date as Wednesday, May 15th, 2024 at 4:30 PM.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Alicia, second by Josh. Does that work for everyone? Okay, very good. And all those, Mitch, does that work for you?
Absolutely.
I was gonna say, Mike doesn't work for you.
Yeah. Um, all those in favor, the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. There. I voted for you, Mitch.
Nothing like putting his first meeting in the time limit.
All right, next we go to the spring Northern Lakes Conference Admin Meeting on the 9th of May, 2024.
Okay, this is just a reminder and a last call. Um, the Spring Northern Lakes Conference Administrative Meeting, Administrative Board Meeting, I should say, is scheduled for May 9th at Charlie's Lakeside in Crandon. Networking is at five and dinner's at six. Mary Felskowski is going to be speaking. I believe Jeff Murso is also going to be joining. Um, could we just get a quick head count here of who is going to attend or would like to attend if there's any changes that I can share with Larry? Nope.
I'm unavailable.
I knew you were.
I'm in Wausau that worked that day, so I have to see what time my last patient is. I meant to look before I left, and I was rushing to get here, so I will let you know tomorrow.
No worries, something's good.
And Mitch?
Mitch, did you want to?
I'll say no.
Okay.
All right. If you have anything you need.
You can let me know one way or the other. Okay, I will do that.
Something's good. Yes, it does. Thank you.
All right, very good. Uh, next we go to the statement of the board canvassers and their certificate of elections. Stacy?
Yep.
You have to bat.
Yep, let me pull it up here. All right, I will read off, um, the votes casted for each of our reporting units and for each candidate, and then the votes total. Um, Hiles, Williams, three, Crawl, four, Ellis, six, zero write-ins for 13 votes casted. Monaco, 30, Williams, 33, Crawl, 35, Ellis, two write-ins, 100 votes casted. Peel, 19, Williams, 19, Crawl, 18, Ellis, zero write-ins, 56 votes casted. Stella, zero votes casted. Sugar Camp, 374, Williams, 478, Crawl, 361, Ellis, 10 write-ins for a vote, total vote of 1,223 votes casted. Three Lakes, Williams, 473, Crawl, 497, Ellis, 523, write-ins, five. Total votes casted, 1,498. For total votes casted, Williams, 899, Crawl, 1,031, Ellis, 943, write-in 17 for a total of 2,890 votes casted, um, total. Do I need to read this too? The next thing, no?
They can read it.
Okay.
I wish. I don't know that you need to read it.
Okay. Any questions on that?
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for that report, and congratulations to our newly elected officials. So looking forward to continued more good things, right?
Absolutely.
Very good. Uh, next we go to consider approval of the personnel report of new hires and resignations.
Okay, the personnel report that I have to present to you here is for hirings. We have hired Rich Javantowski for the girls' basketball head coach. And resignations, Therese Cole Crawl from the student council co-advisor end of the school year. And then I have some, um, hires that I will discuss with you in closed session.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right, so we got the girls covered. That's, that's good. And next we go to, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over the vote. Does anyone prepare to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel report as presented.
Second.
Okay, so motion by Alicia, second by Stacy. Any questions on the report? Hearing none, I'll call to vote. All those in favor, the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion does pass five zero. All right, thank you. And so now we can go to consider approval of salaries and contracts for the district staff, including busing contracts for the 2024 through 2025 school year.
Thank you. Um, as I have shared with you, uh, this was really looked over closely, and Caleb and I did the number crunching, and we determined that it was appropriate that we go ahead and do the 2% increase for both professional and support staff and including our bus drivers within that, um, as well. Um, this is what we had put in our referendum with our planning. It was, um, maintainable and makes sense within our schedule. Um, when we look at it a little more closely, what I want you to recognize is that the 2% is, although it says 2% as a cover-all, when you look by the lanes and steps, depending where it is in the schedule, it is really anywhere from a 4 to a 6% increase. So if somebody has, um, had another year added or another set of credits added, there's a built-in raise within that as well. And I think that's really important to make that clear, because, um, I don't want it to seem like, you know, we are disregarding like the CPI, which we always try to refer to. Um, we've been watching it very closely. The predictions that we have been getting is that after July 1, CPI is going to drop to around 2%. So that is the information we have. Still looking at our schedule. Our schedule is a very generous, it pays our, um, you're looking at the teachers, professional staff. It pays our teachers very generously, because we do give credit for not only their degree, bachelor's or master's, but additional credits. And if they are doing work to self-improve, additional licenses, participating in some of the district programming that we've added, such as letters training or the reading 316 licensure, that is also reflected in their pay movement.
Very good.
Do you have questions that I can help you with on this?
I guess I have one. Um, I mean, I realize that we got rid of steps one through eight, and we basically have step nine as our base.
Correct.
I mean, I don't know how, I mean, if it's just a formality, but do we renumber the steps to start at one? I mean, it's just kinda goofy. If I can see if a new employee or, or if anybody, you know, open records or anything, it just, you know, they see step nine, where's one through eight, kinda thing.
Um, I did discuss this with Caleb a little bit as well, and he said, we certainly could look at that for this summer. Um, when I did start here, it was very important to the Etlis group that it was reflected when we did those contracts, that it said what their step was, their step in lane, and then it actually even referred to the old one. So, and the decision was to get away from that. I think we're at the point that in the project where if we wanted to reiterate that with some language that says over the years, and then probably give a summary of the years that have been eliminated, so it doesn't look like we just started there. Um, so there's some background information as well.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Makes sense. Any other questions? I'll seek a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2% raise as per, as presented.
I'll second.
All right, so motion by Josh, second by Alicia. And last call for any questions? Hearing none, call to a vote. All those in favor, the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Aye, opposed. Motion does pass five zero. Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Caleb, and all those that, uh, helped put this together, and, uh, yeah. Looking forward to, uh, getting this implemented and, and, uh, yeah. I think it's, uh, definitely a fair compensation, um, because, you know, you look at our schedule overall compared to other districts, and, uh, and we are where we want to be, which is basically, uh, higher than normal, because we want the best of the best. So. All right, let's go to the graduation service awards ceremony dates.
Okay, I think I will read through them since we are videoing it as well. Uh, you have dates listed there. The senior awards ceremony is on May 15th at 7:00 PM. Our Three Lakes High School award ceremony is May 23rd at 9:30 AM. The high school graduation ceremony is May 24th at 7:00 PM. The Three Lakes Elementary award ceremony is going to be May 30th at 2:00 PM. And then the Sugar Camp graduation and award ceremony is May 31st at 9:30 AM. The Three Lakes Junior High award ceremony and eighth grade graduation is May 31st at 10:45 AM. And the last day of school is May 31st with an early dismissal at 12:20 PM for Three Lakes Elementary, 12:25 for the Junior High High School, and 12:40 for Sugar Camp. And that day is a happen day.
All right, so are you looking for volunteers?
Yes, we will, we will take volunteers to be present at each of the ceremonies. Um, we will have the retirement this year at our high school level for Mrs. Crawl, um, if someone would like to present for that, and for Mr. Bodis. And then at our Sugar Camp Elementary, we have Robin Lemoine. Did I forget anybody, Justin? Generally, that is saying a few words about that staff person. And if you'd like to think about it, you can certainly just send me a quick email. Oh, for our, our, our support staff, yes. Our support staff would be Jeannie, um, Maney, and Renee Schoff.
That's at the high school awards?
Yes.
I would, I would attempt to make, I could, let me double-check my schedule, but I could tentatively do that one. I've had many of them through the year, through my years here, so.
Okay.
An honor to try and do so. I will make that attempt.
I'm going to be at the Three Lakes Junior High one, just as my daughter is eighth grader, so I will be at that one.
Okay.
Which one was that, Michelle?
The junior high.
Junior high.
Yes, on the 31st at 10:45. I'm going to be at that one.
I'll be attending that as well. So we'll have representation even if we don't have, yeah, retirements, which is wonderful. Thank you.
I'm sure I'll be there too.
Do both.
Uh, the high school graduation and the Sugar Camp graduation.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be at graduation as well. As well, high school graduation.
Yeah, I'll be there as well.
Okay.
Mitch? We'll, I'll be here for the senior awards.
For the graduation ceremony.
Mm-hmm.
You'll have to decide who to, who's gonna hand out the diplomas and such, so. You could Charlie do that at the next meeting.
Very good.
All the bases covered?
I think so.
That's a good thing. All right, well, thank you for volunteering and helping present the awards.
There's a question about the, um, um, graduation. I mean, I know I realize that typically the board president is the one to make the speech, but after so many years, is that something where, Mike, would you like to do one last one?
I'm not sure if it would be appropriate. Okay, but I appreciate the ask. Um, I, but I definitely wanna respect the board for what they are. Yeah, thank you. Yeah. Yeah. All right, we're good. Okay, so let's go to the school forest camp three project update.
Okay, I included a little bit of information for you. Um, I have continued to work with, um, the attorney, Ron Stadler, through our insurance company. Uh, enclosed, you have a, a response to the second complaint that was filed, addressing the issues that were presented. I did have a conversation with him today as well. Um, still waiting response on that matter from the other, um, parties' attorneys. Um, what myself and Justin met with MSA Phil Prezel about three weeks ago and had a discussion about the project and the wetland delineations and what was, um, found to be inaccurate, and some of our concerns going forward with the project development. Um, I would say the meeting went well, but we didn't get quite as much as we wanted to, um, information-wise. Yesterday, myself and Mike met with, um, three of the representatives from MSA, um, Phil Prezel and, um, Scott Martin, the supervisor of Phil, and Jeff Anderson, the project manager from Duluth, who is in charge of everything wetlands, delineation, and environmental. And in that discussion, we were able to talk through some concerns that we had as well. Um, and I will let Mike share from there what he would like to share.
So MSA, uh, out of this discussion yesterday, will come forward with a proposal, um, for the board, to look at, I would assume probably the next board meeting. And, uh, so basically largely reflective of the change in, in the land use. Uh, so we've reduced the land use to trails and education. And, um, the proposal will come through with a relocation of the driveway, which would be further west, so closer to Sugar Camp. Out of a concern to avoid, um, any contact with any past, present wetland area. Um, and there'll be a parking lot, and I would expect to see a small access road so that the back half of that property would be accessible to a service vehicle, or let's just say in an emergency. So, you know, other than that, there really isn't any blueprint for design. A lot of it is going to be, um, basically designed as, 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 as things evolve. But this here is definitely reflective of the new stance that we've taken in that property. And, uh, the total impact area will be less than an acre in size, so a permit will not be needed. And, uh, so there really should not be anything, um, concerning in terms of wetland impact. And, uh, we'll have, uh, a place for a bus to park safely, and, uh, place to turn around, and, uh, we can start utilizing the property. So, um, and, uh, so that proposal you'll see, uh, coming at the next board meeting. And you'll be able to, to vote on that and make a decision if you wanna proceed along with that or make changes. So, any questions?
I guess I have two questions. Um, now, what, I mean, I know it, it's come up a few times in documents. Are we going to be continually held responsible for the work that was, or the, the work that was done currently at the location as far as the bulldozing that was done? I mean, is that going to be under part of that, that disturbed area, that acre?
That's a good question.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I guess, uh, you know, it, it's definitely a disputed matter between MSA and, I guess, the professional delineator that supposedly did the work, um, um, for the plaintiffs. And I guess, so there is a question at this point really on which map is going to be used. But, uh, that would be a question to put forward to MSA.
I will do so.
And the other question I had is, I don't remember if we ever discussed this, but did we ever discuss the thought of coming off of, trying to get permission from Board of Public Lands to maybe get access to come off of Camp Two?
Um, we have not ever asked that.
Cause I know that's higher, that's higher land when you come off of there and already existing road, you know, entrance.
There, if we would stay north of that wetland area that's close to the road there. So, so there are some options to consider. Yeah. So if you could ask those questions of MSA.
I will, I will do that.
Bring that information forward to the next meeting.
Right.
And they are just doing a parking lot and a driveway?
I'm sorry?
They are just doing a parking lot and a driveway? No pavilion, no bathrooms?
An area for where a pavilion could be placed, and then, um, an access road. Uh, no bathrooms, nothing like that at this time.
Okay.
Other questions? Other questions? All right, very good. Okay, it'd be great to see that project move, right?
Yes.
All right, so next we go to district-related positive happenings. Who's up the bat?
We had our ULE the Friday after spring break, and Sutton Bigwood took first, followed by Beckett Heine, and then Brooklyn Roll took first, so. QB, and then we also had our Fuel Up Lightning Tournament during the March Madness thing. I did not win, Kara beat me, fair and square. Kayla Future took first, for instance, so. And then we have our spring concert coming up next Wednesday on the twenty-fourth at two o'clock, anybody wants to attend, so.
So something from the junior high high school perspective that I'd like to add, continuation of our, the last agenda item. Everyone at the table knows that there's, neighbors can present challenges in terms of our trap shooting plans that we had for the Highway Eight parcel. On the other side of the coin, we also had a neighbor, as everybody here knows, who opened up their arms to us, and said, hey, come and shoot at our place. And I just want to report that that's, from the visits I had out there, it's going fantastically well. Because we have two temporary houses out there, our late shift of kids who get done with their golf, and softball, and baseball practices, and soccer practices, and go out there and shoot late, they're, they're still down in home for dinner, much earlier than I remember them being home for dinner in previous excursions to Hyles. So, it's, it's, at least every, every, every piece of feedback I've heard from it is positive. I've been out there a couple times myself, and it goes really slick, having two houses rather than the one we're used to, so.
Yeah.
Thanks again to the Elsager family for inviting us out there, and allowing for us to hold trap shooting practices out there. It's going, going well.
Good news.
Yeah.
Good news.
We've got better part of a month in so far out there, and it's going well.
Yeah, it's great for our students, travel time cut down considerably.
Immensely.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they're not pushing darkness out there either when, when it comes time for the light kids to show up. As always, thanks, thanks to Alan Luke and the gang for, you know, Jeff and the crew, because they're out, they're out there right after school, and they're still out there at five thirty, six o'clock, when the kids get done with practice, so they're, they're spending a lot of time out there.
Yeah.
So that kids can, it accommodates kids who are in other co-curriculars, which is awesome.
Excellent.
Yep.
Junior high, a couple of things, our basketball intermural program has just come to an end, and it was a very successful venture. If I could just get the girls to be part of this, the next time around, we're going to try something else, but it was, it was really good, kids were excited about it. I think certain kids got their homework done that might not have got their homework done to make sure they could play. So we're going to work on something else, we'll, we'll do a vote with the kids moving forward, whether it be wiffle ball, or kickball, or whatever, but it seems to be something that they're enjoying, so. And we also, we have an incentive trip this Friday coming up to Padawadme Center, so.
I'm going to add one, so thank you to our Three Lakes staff. Four seniors were represented at the YMCA of the Northwards Teen Character Awards this past Sunday. So Willow Schroeder, Janet Erickson, LJ Turlisi, and Toby Volkman all got Teen Character Awards. So Three Lakes represented four of thirty-four awardees that night.
Wow. That's fantastic.
Excellent. That's great news. Anybody else?
Well, if not, I want to say thank you to Mike, if you would grab that, wait him for us, because this is your last official meeting. I think you're going to feel like I'm missing something, I'm forgetting something on the third Wednesday of the month, like you should be somewhere. And you're always welcome to come visit and join us. But Mike, seriously, thank you for just a fantastic, your twenty years of service, the five years, four and a half that you have done with me as the president. I have to tell you, when I was hired, and then in November, Mr. Rousey was leaving town, I was a little bit panicky, because I'm like, what did I sign up for, oh no. And you have just been a wonderful cooperative board member, and president, and colleague. It's somebody I feel I can bounce ideas off, and we have some very deep encanted conversations, and a few giggles along the way too. So I just want to say on my own personal behalf, and behalf of the board and everybody from the district, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
And.
Oh, look at that, moving away, I love it.
And if you want to share, you can.
Take a handful, Mike.
It's really blue.
Pretty sweet, huh?
Yeah.
Awesome. Tell you a little story, this goes back a few years, we had a friend had a birthday. And we made a birthday cake for him, and we put two balloons inside the cake. And I had a big air tank underneath the table. And the cake was set down before the person, the birthday person came in, and we hooked up two hoses from the air tank. And we lit the candles, and when it was time for them to blow the candles out, we blew up the cake. Literally blew up the cake. So I don't see any tools on this one, so. I'm probably pretty safe. But yeah, thank you very much for this, and, and yeah, and it is definitely most appropriate to thank everyone that I've gotten a chance to work with over the past twenty-plus years. Staff, administration, past board members, current board members, students, community, it's, it's, it's a lot easier when you have something good moving in a positive direction. And, and, and I'm glad that I got to be part of it in, in any small way. And it's, it's going to continue. As I mentioned before, I feel really good about leaving in the hands of the board administration that is currently here, and in the staff. This district, district is going to continue to fly. And so it's been a big thing to be part of this for me and my family, and it will never be forgotten, and I thank you for all letting me be part of it, thank you. Yeah, all right, so you can throw me out the door pretty quick here, so. All right, and thank you again for the cake, that's awesome.
Pretty good, too.
All right. Let's go on to the WASB correspondence updates.
That's been included in your board docs, but there is the upcoming meetings for, the regional two meeting is tomorrow evening at Lakeland Union High School. Mitch, did you want to join that? They also do an online version too. Let me know if you, if you are going to attend, because then I would go with you. If you're not, then I will do the online one, so just give me a, a quick shout, one way or the other. And then there is some training that's coming up here, there is a workshop on May, there's different times, May seventh through sixteenth, like I said, it's in there, in your board docs. But it's about working towards board mission and working with goals within your school district. So if that's of interest to you, you can read more about the information, that would be included there. If you would need help with registration or anything of that matter, you could give Carrie a shout, and she could help you with that.
Very good. Yeah, and that onboard meeting is definitely good information. So if you can any way fit that in, I would strongly encourage it. Awesome. All right, next we go to executive session. We will adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five one C to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility specifically to consider individual administrator staff contract, contracts, to consider possible staff FTE reduction, to consider individual teaching staff contract, contracts, and to consider employment compensation and performance evaluation of the district administrator. I will seek a motion to adjourn to exec.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight five one C.
Second. All right, so a motion by Alicia, second by Josh, we'll take a real call vote, Stacy?
Aye.
And Josh?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Mike, aye. Motion passes five zero, we can take a quick break, five minutes. And thank you all for attending tonight, and yeah, we'll look forward to seeing you future. Awesome.